It's called to order.
Doctor Day, pledge of allegiance, please.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I'm glad you're allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor Day. Now, item C is agenda approval for work session. Is there a motion to approve?
Make amendment to the agenda?
She wants to, she wants to make an amendment to the agenda.
What's your amendment, Ms. Lowry?
For closed session.
What's the amendment?
For I T R T.
Do you like to make a motion to the agenda?
So there's a motion on the floor to amend the agenda by adding a topic to the closed session.
Close session? Yes.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay. Ball second, Ms. Lowry made the motion. Need discussion on the amendment. Ms. Work, would you please call the roll?
Before she, before we vote. So now we're, oh, we're voting on the amendment.
Amendment.
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Mr. Gilliam.
Epstein.
Mr. Andrews.
Yes.
Mr. Charles.
Yes.
Doctor Day.
Yes.
Doctor Gupta.
Yes.
Doctor Carter.
Yes.
Mrs. Preston.
Yes.
Mr. DePaul.
Yes.
Ms. Lowry.
Yes.
Just for clarification, you want to clarify the motion, amended motion?
Well, the amended motion is just that we're going to add a topic to the closed session identified as, what are the letters? I T R T.
I T R T.
Okay, and we'll just have to cite the appropriate part of the FOIA law, which I think is item A1 and the 2.2-3711. We'll have to cite that when we get to the closed session.
Okay.
Before we vote, I wanted to, I wanted to make a comment that at this point in our meeting, this is the appropriate time to make changes to the agenda as we just did. Once the agenda is adopted, once we vote on it and our vote carries, then to change the agenda requires a two-thirds vote. That's the standard policy according to Robert's rules. To change something that you've previously voted on would require a two-thirds vote. And so if, if a board member tries to bring a new item before the board without changing the agenda, the chair can rule that out of order. Okay, we are bound to our agenda unless we formally change it.
Thank you, Doctor. You have a motion to approve the agenda.
Prove.
Doctor Day, Mr. Tross, any discussion on the agenda? Ma'am Clark, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Gilliam.
Epstein.
Mr. Andrews.
Yes.
Mr. Tross.
Yes.
Doctor Day.
Yes.
Doctor Gupta.
Yes.
Doctor Carter.
No.
Mrs. Preston.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't, could you repeat?
I'm sorry?
Yes, yes, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Mr. DePaul.
Yes.
Ms. Lowry.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item D1 is chair comment, and I'll yield my time to Doctor Day today.
All right, so I wanted to comment that the agenda for our board meetings, this is a work session, this is not what we refer to as an actual board meeting, typically include a board member comment section. That period should not be used to conduct business or to make motions. I mean, it would be fine to announce the, our intent to bring a motion in the future, but that's not an appropriate place to make new motions or carry out business. The purpose of that is for members to make personal comments about school or board-related activities of special interest to them. Comments should be brief, limited to one minute. Now, we could make that a formal rule if we wanted, that would, that would require a motion, and we don't have an item like that on our agenda, but it's just, I'm mentioning this for the board to consider. If they want to make a formal rule limiting the time spent by individuals in that board comment period to one minute, we can do that in the future.
Thank you, Doctor Day, and I wanted to take this opportunity again formally to welcome our new CFO, Ms. Sonia James. So welcome, we're all happy you're here, and we all look forward to working with you, and Doctor Edwards, and the rest of her members of her team.
Thank you, Ms. James.
Next item is E1, facilities, construction grants, Doctor.
Yep, and this is for information, so I'm turning over to Doctor Wodoka to talk to you a little bit about some of the grants that we got for our facilities.
Thank you, Doctor Edwards, and good evening, everyone. We are pleased to bring to you just for information, just some information we have about grants that the school division has received for school construction projects. We reviewed this with the finance committee yesterday, and we wanted to kind of just review that. In terms of process, these, these funds are actually appropriated by city council for the schools' capital fund, which is on the sort of city side of things, and that'll be in the third quarter adjustments. We wanted you to make, I wanted you to be aware of these projects. Also, just wanted to take a moment to sort of brag a little bit about some of the money that we brought into the community. We think that's a really great thing, and so we just want to talk about this project. So the first one is the School Construction Assistance Program, this is grant year 2022. This is for the Dunbar Middle School Window Replacement Project. The Window Replacement Project at Dunbar actually started in 2015, and about 80% of the windows were replaced in the building at that time, but just due to lack of funds, weren't able to finish the project. And so the 12th Street side and some of the Monroe Street side of the building were left with single pane, you know, original windows from the 1950s for that building. And so this project is going to complete the replacement of that, those windows, and of course, will improve the efficiency of the building and improve the learning environment for our students and, of course, our faculty as well. So the grant we received was $270,000. The total project cost is $295,646, and then the balance will be funded by savings on prior projects, so there's available funds to do that. The project has been designed, has been bid and awarded, will be under construction in full gear in summer of 2024, but some smaller investigative work relating to figuring out how the, the window system works and that sort of thing will be done over spring break and actually in the next couple of weeks ahead of time. So on the next slide, just have a picture of the windows that we're talking about. These are those old steel windows on the 12th Street side. If you go to the next slide, then you'll see what the newer windows look like, it'll look something like that. Again, just a little more modern look while taking into account assuring that we are being appropriate for the architecture of the building, as well as making sure that we have double-pane appropriately-designed windows that will, again, be more efficient and been better for the school. So any questions about that grant? Not, we'll move on to the next one. This is the, the Security Equipment Grant Management Grant, was for grant year 2023. So a part of our fiscal year 2022 fund balance that we received back from city council about a year ago now was to install security vestibules at the schools that did not have them, Dunbar Middle School, Paul Monroe, and Hutcheson Early Learning Center. This was a project that was started over the last decade where all the schools in the division were provided security vestibules, and simply these just hadn't been done yet. So this project was awarded for approximately $100,000. Total project cost is $480,000, and again, that balance is funded by the original city council fund balance appropriation that occurred last year. So the grant was specifically for Dunbar Middle School, so that's where it has to be spent. If we show you the next slide, the, the security vestibule, this will, the, the front of the building will still maintain its, its, its look that it has now, so you know that, that picture very well. But if you move to the next slide, I just kind of show you the diagram, and it's hard to talk about from back here, but in the security vestibule, you'll see sort of in the middle area where you have sort of two layers of entrance there, the first set of doors, and the second set of doors. In the existing building, there are two sets of doors that go into the stairwells from that entrance way. Those will be covered with glass that has ballistic film on it so that it's not accessible from the outside. New doors will be installed to, in order to access the stairwell, and then, of course, there will be the second layer of protection for that, that building there. So that is a great project, again, improving the security and safety of our buildings. Certainly, we're focusing in this conversation about Dunbar, but again, Paul Monroe Elementary and Hutcheson Early Learning Center will also receive those, but those will be local funds that pay for that.
Question. So in this, the funding for all of it, it'll be paid all in full with everything, we won't, like, be in the hole anywhere?
Yes, ma'am, we have it.
Okay, awesome, awesome.
And. Excuse me, sir.
And the, let me see, the, the regular ones are here, the ballistic ones are here?
Yeah, so they'll all have ballistic film on, on throughout all the glass. So then if you, like, sort of the side of that sort of square, there, there will be glass there, yeah. There will be glass there, that would sit existing door, yep.
You're putting glass here, right?
Yep, so there's an existing door there, and there'll be glass there that covers that. That way, the, the person at the security desk can see into the hallway, the stairwells, and again, there'll be sort of fully encapsulated ballistic film, so.
Glass here.
And glass door there, yep.
Okay.
So it's all just film, it's not actual, it's, it's not bulletproof?
It's not bulletproof glass, right.
Okay, thanks, I misunderstood the other day.
And it makes it more like automotive glass, it doesn't, it doesn't shatter when it's punctured.
Much more difficult to get through.
Yes.
Than regular glass?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, any other questions on this project?
I think we saw a video last year of a guy hitting it with a sledgehammer, and he was hammering away at it, and he didn't get through.
He didn't, and it takes, you know, if you're really going at it, it can take, you know, 90 seconds or more to get through, which is really, you know, it's about buying time and trying to reduce the likelihood of an assailant getting into the building.
Yeah.
And is this something that you will go through all the schools at some point in time?
The film, glad you asked that, because that's my next, next grant. If you'll let me go to the next slide. The Stronger Connections Grant in grant year 2023 provides funding for the elementary schools to have ballistic film installed at the, at the entrances as well as any first-floor window that's available. So this, this money, this $278,000 that was provided through federal pass-through Title IV funds was applied, had to be specifically applied to elementary schools. We also have an existing CIP project that will help pay for the remainder of the schools. So we've done four or five schools now, and the remainder of the schools will be completed by March 2024. So this, this next month and a month and a half. So this was a project that was started actually really through a community group called Safe Schools Lynchburg. They sort of gave us the, the push to get moving on this, and specifically, they were focusing on, on EC glass just as a place to start. We were able to expand that out and use some CIP funds to help us install the ballistic film in every single school in the division, and again, that will be done by the end of the year, end of March, actually.
How much did Safe Schools raise?
It saved about forty, or raised about $40,000. So that's all money that we're not having to spend on, on that, that's, that's money that's donated to, through the Ed, Ed Foundation. They've done a great job with that. Lots of folks, lots of folks donated, and it's a really, really good program. If there's any questions about that? If not, just one more slide, I think, just a sort of summary. Between all three of those grants, we, we brought in the last year about $648,000 just for capital projects. Again, these are monies that otherwise we would have to spend, and we would have to, we can now then use it for other projects that need to be done elsewhere, and so that's a really positive thing. We like to brag about those things, although there's lots and lots more work to do, and we'll continue to investigate and go after those grants. I do wanted to just comment on the staff and the finance office in particular. As you all know, anytime we get a grant, there is certainly the initial grant work to be done, but then there's the hours and hours and hours of the accounting and backend kinds of work that needs to be done. So I'm very appreciative of that work because they're very good at it, and, and I don't have to do it.
And you probably have some reporting to do beyond just the accounting, you probably, right?
Oh, absolutely, yeah, it's, it's a.
So I don't think people appreciate that when you get a grant, there's a tremendous amount of paperwork that has to be done.
Absolutely, so.
Well, thank you for the staff, everybody.
And Doctor Wodoka, just, you have staff members that are dedicated to doing this, correct? And certainly, I would say that they are more than making up for whatever overhead is associated with them in orders of magnitude, so.
Without doubt.
Excellent work, so it's fantastic, thank you.
Questions for Doctor Wodoka? Thank you, Doctor Wodoka, Doctor Edwards for all your hard work. The next one is city request for heritage and Perrymont property.
Okay, and I'm just gonna turn it right back over to Doctor Wodoka to talk a little bit about a request from the city.
Sure thing. In your agenda packet, there is a letter of request from the Director of Parks and Rec. It's a conversation that's been going on for some time regarding two properties that Lynchburg City Schools is currently responsible for. One reminder for the board is that all of our properties at Lynchburg City Schools are actually owned by the city. So it's different than a lot of school divisions in the, in the state. Most school boards own their property, but in Lynchburg, for whatever reason, the city has always retained ownership. But there was a, an agreement that was established in 2005 for how that relationship was going to occur, what are responsibilities to maintain the buildings and their responsibilities for capital costs, and then if the properties were to be returned, how that process would occur. So the request is for two properties, one on the Heritage Campus. So the property you see before you is, and you can't see it because of the Zoom, things are in the way, is very much towards the back of the property. Before the new school was built, this property was the student parking lot across, sort of across the creek and up the stairs. Since then, it was turned into sort of a quasi-practice field and that sort of thing. And so there's been sort of this shared partnership between the Parks and Rec Department and the school division for that property just right of the diagram you see. There's a sort of a forest area, that's, that's all pro, city property that's, that's utilized by Parks and Recreation. And so they've approached us and asked specifically about this property to be able to invest in it and make it into sort of, sort of a more appropriate athletic field, as well as install other assets such as a shelter, that's what they, to make it more of a park kind of property. Right now, we're just maintaining it, the school largely is not using it. Occasionally, they may use it for, for certain practices and that sort of thing, but largely, it's not, not being used for that purpose. There is one purpose that is being used, and that is the, I got an email from the Marine ROTC instructor just to remind us that they have a land navigation course, but it's actually in the sort of forested area. And, and if this, the board approves this transfer back to the city, what I would suggest is that we put into the agreement just that we'll maintain access for that, and our athletic teams would have sort of first choice to be, be able to use the field. And I think that's a, a fair agreement, and, and that was, that was agreed to sort of verbally by Parks and Rec Director. If you go on to the next slide, this is the Perrymont property. So this, again, is property that we maintain but have not sort of fully utilized, and they've had their eye on this park, this property to develop more of a neighborhood kind of park location. A couple of key points in this property, in this concept, and as this would be built out, would be the addition of a bus loop. So if you've been to Perrymont in the afternoon, you know that the bus, buses, you know, on the side of the street are, you know, cause a significant traffic jam that's there. And you'll also see an outdoor classroom that's depicted. And so this is property that, when, when we first started talking about it, that we wanted to make sure that before we look at, looked at any concept, that there would be plenty of room if ever there was a need to expand that building or do an expansion to, 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 to that property. And so we think that's definitely out of the way. They've also proposed investing, and there's an existing sort of baseball diamond in making that sort of a multi-use field, again, which we would have access to and use for. But as you know, we don't really have the capital dollars to invest in many of our campuses the way that we certainly would like to, and this is another way for this to get done, and also have a shared use agreement for our campuses to be nicer places for our students and certainly also the community as well. So if the board were to choose to do this, this certainly is not up for a vote tonight, but just wanted to make you aware of it. The process is very simple, that the school board would take, would approve a resolution, excuse me, to, to authorize this transfer back, and then the city council would authorize a resolution to do the same thing, if that's what the board would choose to do.
And they're going to put in a bus loop?
Yes, that would be the.
That'd be part of it?
Yeah, we would, we wouldn't pay for that.
Should this go to facilities, financing facilities first, or this is just for the board?
It did at the January meeting.
Okay, okay, I mean, after this, so this is, this is where you're presenting it to the board?
Right.
Okay, I'm sorry, I just wanted to be clear about that, all right.
Um, for the heritage one, don't our football teams use it from summer to, like, what is it, last game is in October?
Yeah, so I'm not sure, if you go back to that slide, so I was told by the, the school's principal that they don't really use that site any longer.
So where do they practice?
There's a, there's a, there's two other fields.
Oh.
So this is like the, like the wayback.
Way, oh, I see, I see. Okay, and on the Perrymont one, okay, if we wanted to expand that building, which, like you said, we don't have the money for it now, right now, behind Perrymont is a steep hill.
Right.
So that would all have to be either built up or, you know, so that the, the, the ground is level, so we would need that space and to modify that space back into the woods there.
Right, so the, the concept that we came up when, when we were talking about what expansions will be done would actually be on the other side of the building, sort of in front of.
Oh, okay.
The gym, and so that's, that's where we felt comfortable for this, for that very reason, right? The topography is not very good there.
Yes.
When they did the expansion in the 90s, they, they really had to build a big building in order to address that.
Okay, so the parking lot would disappear?
We would probably just reconfigure some of it.
Oh, okay, all right.
Doctor Carter?
Yeah.
Other questions?
Is this a wayback picture also?
No, this is a, what do you mean, I'm not sure.
An original sketch that hasn't grown out from this, from this point, it, it hasn't been developed further?
So this is, this is a concept drawing? I'm not sure, I understand the question.
Is this the school right here?
That's the school right there, yes, sir.
Okay, and so what Ms. Lowry's talking about is expanding this way, but you thought that, that's not in the plan?
Expansion, she's saying, if there's a hill there.
Yeah, on the back.
And again, and the kids play baseball, and we're not losing the field, the kid, I know Little League, rec league plays there.
Because you can see it.
Yeah.
On the playground.
Don't they have some adult games there too?
I've only been to Little League games there, I don't know.
So that's a lot of forest, so what would parks do with that, or would the?
Yeah, so they have, if you see, they've, they've trails sort of designed through there.
So they would, it'd be full of trails?
Yeah.
Got you.
Sort of more passive kind of recreation.
Now, how would that, how would be, how would we have protection for the school?
Yep, so, you know, certainly you can see the, the, the disconnect there, there's a, there's a space difference there that's sort of through the woods, but it's pretty consistent with what we have at other schools. Lincoln Middle is an example where the, the trail comes right, right through that. Certainly, the sidewalks and everything else everywhere else would be there. So I, I, I hear that, I'm not, I think it's, by, by point, I would rather have people around, that's a positive thing, so.
Okay, all right.
So from this point, we just have to make it an action item to go to them?
Yeah, I, I don't have the, the, the resolution agreement for you tonight, so at some point, we'll bring that back to you at a board meeting, and that would be the time to vote.
Mr. Tilly.
Is transfer the only option that the school system has with this type of property?
Yes, because we don't, we don't own the property, so we can't, we can't sell the, sell it to them, I guess, and I'm not sure what, what your other thoughts would be.
We just have permission to use it.
Yeah, we, essentially, we have a lease right now, the property.
Can you sublease it?
I, actually, that's, that is, that is addressed in the agreement, I think we cannot without council approval.
But we can rent out our buildings to organizations, not this land.
And that's also, that's also contemplated in the agreement.
I have a question, you know, I've expressed concern about that soccer field behind the tennis courts. So this drawings were not up to my eye standard, so that this land doesn't include that soccer field.
It does not.
Used by our students for short puts and, you know, because I walk around that tennis court periphery. So that, this land is beyond that staircase up. And the other thing is the staircase up, as I walk up there, it says open from sunset, sunrise to sunset. And so only access to our stu, assuming we control the access in terms of. So when city takes over, will we have access in case our students wants to use, have be able to open the lockup and?
Sure, yeah, so, so my, my perspective on this, and I, and I talked to the, the Park and Rec Director today to make sure that they were in agreement with this, would be that, that LCS activities would have sort of first right of refusal, first come, first served kind of thing for that, for that space. So we think that's really important, because they're, they're not really using it right now very much, but if we do need to use it, we think it's important, and, and it's going to be designed for that purpose anyway.
Because they got those metal doors on the Leesville roadside, and assuming we close, we lock, we have the keys to those locks.
Yeah, that's a really good question, I, I don't know the answer to that.
The city takes over, if they have the keys, will they share, sort of a joint thing? So if LCS wants to open them after the sunset?
Sure.
Or practice.
I, I'll make sure that's in the agreement that we have access.
Other questions for Doctor Wodoka?
I mean, I think it's great, I mean, the city's going to maintain it, and we get to utilize it, first right of refusal.
Thanks.
And as I said, ultimately, this will be up to the city council to, to also, to accept it back. They may, they may say no, I don't know, but I don't, I don't know why they would do that.
For $3.1 billion, we'll give it.
Yes.
I want 10, but you go ahead.
Thank you, Doctor Wodoka. Next one is draft 2425 BASS calendar, Doctor.
Yep, okay, so at the February 6 meeting, you approved the LCS calendar, and we always do that first, and then we do the BASS calendar, which is modeled off of the LCS calendar. Most of the va, the vacation days are similar, but you know that BASS is a year-round school, and they have their intercession. So what you have is what Mrs. Hendricks and her team came up with as their calendar for the 2425 school year, and it would need board approval, which I would like to do tonight, just so I can get all the calendars up and posted for our families. But if you need more time, we can certainly move that to the next board meeting.
Are there any changes in the calendar compared to the last year, please?
What do you mean?
Any new changes compared to the 2324 calendar?
Certainly, the similar changes that we saw in the LCS calendar, the biggest one being 176 days versus 180 days with the snow days built in as well. There are intentional places where there are student release days, where staff are working and grading and doing the things that they do usually at the close of a quarter or marking period. But it's pretty much modeled similar to the one that we did for.
I have a question, but I'll let, any other questions for Doctor Edwards? Mr. Jilly?
Has the second level of BASS, the wing that is uncomplete, been completed?
The, the, the door has been installed, and I believe all the cabinets have been addressed where we had the issues with the glass.
You mean the, the wing, the whole number, excuse me, the four classrooms or so, where the, just the framing has been put up, but was incomplete as of not too long ago?
Oh, no, it's, it's done, yeah. I was there last week.
Great.
I have a question.
Ms. Lowry.
Doctor Edwards, instead of having two calendars, have we ever considered going back to, or? Dr. Edwards, instead of having two calendars, have we ever considered going back to, or, and it's probably not a popular idea, I know once upon a time, a long time ago, it was talked about all the schools being year-round, and we had voted on it, this is decades ago, but anyways, has there ever been consideration of talking about having one calendar because all the schools are year-round?
Um, we, we have not had that full-blown conversation, which would be inclusive of the middle schools and the high schools. There have been talks whether or not other elementary schools would follow this model, but nothing has been proposed from a building level that says, we're interested in, in following that same model.
Could we do a survey to find out if that is of interest?
Good.
We need to, is anyone else interested in making a motion on that or making that request of the administration to survey whether or not we have a number of principals interested in moving into a full-time schedule?
Well, I know before it was about, parents said they have kids at multiple levels, middle, elementary, middle, high school, so throws off vacation time, things like that, and so it wasn't popular, I'm just wondering if it would be more popular now after all the things that have happened in the last several years, might be easier, you know? But it depends on sports, all kinds of things, so.
Okay, Edwards, if we ever go close to home rezon, knowing BASS is a year-round school, how will the dual-track calendar look like? Will that, you know, if somebody doesn't want to go, when you move to close to home rezon?
It's the same right now, so if, if a family, we actually have families that want to go to the year-round school, so they'll put in an application to attend. We also have families that, you know, that doesn't work for them, so they all do, they do a superintendent placement with my office. So just having that level of choice for families, because it is a zoned school in that area.
So, would you, you want this to be an action item today?
I would love for it to be an action item, so we can publish it for our families.
Need a motion to make it an action, Mr. DePaul?
Second.
Mrs. Lowry, any discussion on making it an action item? Madam Clark, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Jaleel?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Trust?
Yes.
Dr. Day?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Dr. Carter?
Yes.
Mrs. Preston?
Yes.
Mr. DePaul?
Yes.
Mrs. Lowry?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Now, it's an action item, is there a motion to approve it?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mrs. Lowry, Mr. Andrews, any discussion on this motion? Madam Clark, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Jaleel?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Trust?
Yes.
Dr. Day?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Dr. Carter?
Yes.
Mrs. Preston?
Yes.
Mr. DePaul?
Yes.
Mrs. Lowry?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item four is twenty-two, twenty-five operating budget discussion, Dr. Edwards.
Yep, so as we continue with our discussion regarding the operating budget, I just want to remind the public of all of the wheels that are turning with the operating budget in terms of how we are funded, so part of our funding comes from city council, and as we are reviewing our budget, so is city council simultaneously. There is a joint meeting on March nineteenth between city and schools, and we look forward to city council approving their final budget in April, May. Also, we received in December the governor's budget, which is the one that we used to base our preliminary budget proposal on, and now the House and the Senate have each of their budgets as well, or their budget proposals, I should say. They are not available in the CAC tool yet, so we have not been able to do the work that we normally do, and as of our meeting this morning, there's some slowdown with getting it into the CAC tool, so while we were hopeful that we would have that real quick, because of the way those two budgets are somewhat different than the CAC tool is set up, that's going to be a delay for us. But tho- those two budgets, as well as the governor's budget somewhere, will land and have a final budget from the general assembly, probably in March or Aprils as well. So just so that the community understands that the budget process is very fluid as we move forward. So we are back to our discussion on where we were with our budget proposal, and just in terms of some budget history, I know that Dr. Day wanted to talk a little bit about that.
Since you mentioned the state budget, let me just, one side of the House, they're proposing a three percent increase. The other side of the Virginia Assembly, they're proposing a three point seven percent increase, but that's only for SOQ. So, am I correct in saying that'll put a three percent is almost two point four million dollars, or two, almost three million? Right, so it'll put, and it's almost fifty-fifty, you can say, to be safe? So it'll put an additional burden of about one point five minimum and maybe higher on the budget you were looking at the numbers last time. Am I, is that the right assumption to make?
Yes, because even with the, the, the compensation, there's a local match that we have to do as well as figuring out our folks who are also in operating, but not SOQ-funded. And then we have some folks like our Title I literacy coaches or our school nutrition employees who are not in operating or in, they're not in operating, they're not SOQ. They're in grants that we also try to make sure that we have parity when we do the salary increases as well.
We don't have coronavirus money this year to backfill that.
We do not have any CARES funds or anything, so this would be totally at our level in our discussion with city and seeing what we can do.
Dr. Day?
Just a question about how the CAC tool works. So, does it let you say, we want to see the CAC tool based on the governor's budget? Or does it let you select the different budget possibilities once they're all entered in? Or is it, you got it, or is it based just on the governor's budget?
No, so once the House and the Senate's budget are in, there are three different CAC tools.
So you tell it?
Well, we don't tell it, they send them to us, so you can go on, anybody can go on VDOE's site and just say, I want to open the one that's the governor's, or I want to open the one that's the Senate, and you have access to any division, I mean, it's.
Okay, yeah, it's a, yeah, for all of them.
Floor is yours, Dr. Day.
Well, what am I supposed to talk about?
She said you will be discussing.
You said you wanted to go over the budget history.
Well, okay, so I prepared this document that it's linked to the agenda called Budget History. I went through and I wanted to look at what the history of the city's allocation to us versus the city's own budget and the state's contribution to, I don't see it there.
Oh, it's in board docs?
It's in board docs, yeah, it's, it's linked to tonight's agenda, it says Budget History. Yep, that's it, yep, so, let me just, let me point at this, so I, I, I gathered, these are, these numbers here are how much the city contributed to our budget each of those years. This is how much the state contributed to our budget, this is all in millions.
We were reaching out to Mr. Austin to increase the font size, so people can.
I can read it.
Zoom it. Yeah, zoom, there you go.
Thank you.
Okay, can we scroll, yes, thank you, very good, very good, right there, fine. And then, this was our LCS budget for each of the fiscal years, twenty-nineteen through the current one. And then this last column, I took our budget from twenty-nineteen and applied a, a national average inflation rate to it, to inflate, so basically trying to keep everything in equivalent dollars. So this would be, this would be flat funding except for inflationary increases. So if we were, to be funded at an equivalent level to twenty-nineteen today, our budget would need to be a hundred and nineteen million. That's what that shows, and those numbers are the top graph here, the orange one. The green line is our actual budgets for those years, so you can see it is below the inflation level. So in inflation-adjusted dollars, we have been losing ground compared to twenty-nineteen. The orange line here is the state's funding, you can see that it's gone up as both our actual budget and the inflated budget goes up, and the blue line at the bottom is the city's allocation to us. And so compared to the other two, you see it's relatively flat, in fact, it's actually decreased a little from back here, all right? Can we go to the next?
May I have a, just a, please? A quick question, going back to the inflation-adjusted number. So again, in twenty-nineteen, our budget was ninety-seven million dollars, correct?
Ninety-seven point six, yes.
Right, and if we just applied the national average for inflation, everything else the same, so level funding, but with inflation adjustment, it's a hundred and nineteen point four million dollars.
Yes.
Okay.
And see, the other thing, I get a lot of emails that you lost students, but in a K through twelve public system, the problem is not all five fingers are same. You have students with IEPs who have intense needs, moderate needs, low needs, it may be two-to-one instruction. So, those are the students which a lot of people may not need, want, but a public school system has to provide.
Well, notice my last line on the slide here. Our actual budget here is eight point four percent below the inflation-adjusted twenty-nineteen budget, but our enrollment is down only six point six percent. So we've lost more ground than would be accounted for by decreased enrollments. Okay, so I think now we can go to the next slide.
Thank you.
Yeah, and so here, I looked at the city's revenues, that's this column, and the city's allocation to the LCS budget, and I calculated what percent of the city's revenues was allocated to LCS. And you can see that back in twenty-nineteen, for a couple of years there, it was something over twenty-two percent, and it's decreased since then, it's down to eighteen point three percent now. So the portion of the city's revenues that's coming to LCS is decreasing, okay? And this is just a graph showing the city's revenues and their allocation to LCS. Again, that line is essentially flat, and I think there's another graph on the same page, a little bit farther down. Yeah, okay, that shows our allocation as a percent of the city's revenue. It was the final column in the table above, and you can see that it starts out above almost twenty-two point eight percent back in twenty-nineteen, and it's down to something above eighteen percent now. So the city's, the portion of the city's budget that's coming to us is getting smaller and smaller. And then I think there's, I think there's one more page, if I remember correctly. Yeah, okay, so here I compared the city and state contributions to our budget as a fraction of the LCS budget. So in other words, I'm saying that in twenty-nineteen, the city's contribution was forty-three percent of our budget, the state's contribution to our budget was fifty-four percent, and I've graphed those two things. You can see that the state has contributed an increasing proportion of our budget, while the city has, has contributed a decreasing portion of our budget. More and more of our budget is coming from the state versus the city, and that's what this graph illustrates.
Can I ask?
Yes.
So when state increases their funding, and they're giving ten percent increase to SOQ, we got to match up for ten percent for non-SOQ in our budget, you see what I'm saying?
Correct.
And that's where the gap is, is, is of material interest, because we don't have money to match for that non-SOQ gap.
Right, and I think, thank you, Dr. Day, what, what everyone should know too is that part of our state budget is also based on enrollment, so even with the decline in enrollment, the state contribution to LCS overall has gone up over the years, because there's more, we need a little bit more to take care of children each year, plus with the salary increases as well, so.
So I just wanted to add that, I was not preparing this to try to advocate a particular agenda or point of view, I was just trying to objectively see what is, what is this historical situation? And you can draw whatever you conclude, whatever conclusions you want from it, I was trying just to give us accurate data. Almost all of this data came from the DOE website. So, and I, at the very, on the very first slide, I indicated where, where it came from, so. That's just to help contribute to our deliberations about this.
Mrs. Lowry?
Yeah, because in two thousand nineteen, if you add the city plus the state, what do you get, ninety-seven? But if you do it twenty-two, twenty-four, it's in the eighties.
There's some money that comes from the federal government.
Yeah.
So those numbers don't add up to a hundred.
No, I'm just saying, the disparity between the ninety-seven to the eighty, what's, eighty-eight percent, you know? Like, that's a pretty big gap between the two, ninety-eight, sorry. Well, no, no, yeah, you're right, ninety, my bad.
Yeah, the last one totals to, what, ninety-eight, ninety-three, the top line totals to ninety-seven point four.
So, I was just wondering if that's how city council was.
I don't know.
Doing their numbers, well, if the state gives you this, because I've heard that, the state gives you this, so we're going to give you this. If there's a certain number there, we're focused on.
And I think we just need to be, I understand the philosophy, but we need to be cautious just about that, and if anybody's in a two-income home, and as your, let's say, electric bill has gone up, as ours has, or other bills, I don't, I, I think it would be inappropriate for me, as the employer, to ask my employees to tell me, you know, what is your spouse's increase, so that I can lower your salary just to keep you there. And that's, that's pretty much what we are experiencing right now in terms of some of the split funding. So we just, we need to get a better way of compromising in there to meet the needs of kids.
Well, this was good that what Mr. Day did, because, Dr. Day did, because that really does show huge disparity in how we're losing funding in its inflation age.
Dr. Edwards, last year, there was a discussion when the new city manager took over that we'll have a funding formula for Lynchburg City Schools. So where do we stand on that funding formula?
We, we have not had any additional conversation regarding that funding formula. I do believe Mr. Patrick, who is the deputy city manager, in maybe January twenty-twenty-three, did a presentation for the city council on the different ways you can do that revenue sharing with the funding formula, and a lot of that was based off of something that they had done previously in Norfolk, in terms of sharing it. I know other divisions also have revenue sharing agreements, some formal, some informal, in terms of what they, what they want to do. I had used the Norfolk sharing formula to kind of project where we might be, I think I had sent that to you, and it, and we would be upwards in the forty-seven, forty-eight, which is where we were last year when we were requesting funds to meet the second half of that five percent, five percent, two percent increase that staff has. But to my knowledge, we have not had any additional conversations regarding the funding formula.
I want to follow up with, you know, the GLR came up with a funding formula last year. Was it in this session, was there a bill, I may have missed it, to follow that formula, when will that go into effect?
So, so I think what the, what I read from what the Senate said was that they think it's premature to try to do that in this budget year, but they're going to have a time over the summer to try to hash out how they would do that. So they, I think that what they looked at in the Senate and the House proposed budget is to try to get us to where we are at least to national average, but the funding structure isn't, doesn't fundamentally change in the proposed, in any of the three proposed budgets, and then this is summer, they would, they would try to hash that out.
Cause the GLR, LAR proposal was friendlier for, you know, based on the needs of the students, so there's differential between a regular student and a special needs student, funding for school districts, so.
Dr. Day, what was the inflation number that you used for the inflated? If we can go back to the very first page of the document, I got those numbers from here.
Oh, okay.
And so they're just numbers that weren't like qualified by PBGC or, or GAT or anything like that? No, it was just some kind of a national average, I didn't, I, I wouldn't know how to slice it more finely than that. I mean, if you want to use different numbers, you show me the numbers, I'll plug them in where I did the calculations here and tell you how it comes out, but. I was just, I was just asking about the average, like. I could tell you what the numbers were. Yes, that would be good. You want that right now? Do, can you? Yeah, I'd just have to pull up the, the software that did that.
In the meantime, other questions for Dr. Edwards?
I noticed that you said it was March twenty, March nineteenth that we have our, our school meeting with the city. I do see it on this calendar, that's the twenty-sixth. with the city. I do see it on this calendar, that's the twenty sixth.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is that?
Correct.
Okay, so, all right.
We have our public hearing on March nineteenth.
Okay.
Coming here, it's coming, okay. Inflation. The number I used for twenty nineteen was two point three percent. For twenty twenty, it was one point four percent. For twenty twenty one, it was seven percent. For twenty twenty two, it was six point five. And for twenty twenty three, it was three point four.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
May I make another, not related to this, another comment about the budget? Because the facilities and finance met yesterday, and one of the things we talked about was health insurance.
Yes, sir.
And you know that at every board meeting, we all, almost every board meeting, we have some kind of a discussion about health insurance. That's one of the things that's reported to the board each month, how much we've brought in in premiums versus how much we've had to pay out in claims. And we talked a fair bit yesterday about the possibility of moving away from our self-funded plan and going perhaps with a different, perhaps a different provider, perhaps a, I mean, right now, we, we have a contract with Anthem to administer our plan, but we fund it ourselves. We, we are responsible for any cost overruns. So we, we haven't, of course, not made any decisions, but the current contract runs out at the end of this calendar year. And at that time, in any event, we would be looking at entering a new contract. If we wanted to continue, we'd still be entering a new contract with Anthem. If we wanted a different arrangement with Anthem, that's a possibility. We could move to another provider. There's a number of choices, and Ms. Jamis is working on that with a consultant that's already engaged in this. And we have asked her to bring to the board a report of the options, when, when she's ready and when she has all the appropriate information. So that certainly would affect our next year's budget, because if we did make a change starting January one, that will affect the, you know, the second half of the fiscal year. So I'm just informing you that we're looking into that, whether we'll know all that information in time to reflect it in our budget recommendation to the city, but we are looking at that.
What you're saying is we are not changing anything, we're just exploring different options.
We're trying to see what the options are.
Yeah. And the reason being, we are self-funded, so we collect about ten million dollars in premiums. And for last two years, based on the data presented to us, we are paying out about twelve million dollars. So there's a gap of two million dollars, which the district has to eat up each year after year for, at least for the last two years.
Yeah.
So what we are trying to do is what could we do so we can make this insurance, which is very important, as Dr. Carter always says, retention for our employees, a sustainable thing going forward. So that's what, that's all we are doing is exploring different options.
Yeah, they, the several pages of information that the superintendent gave us at our last meeting, A through G, the document labeled A gave us some history of that, broken down by not just LCS, but the other items that are, that we are the fiduciary agent for, like the governor's school, Turning Point Academy, that kind of thing. And looking at those numbers, it seems to me that our premiums, to, to close the gap for both the twenty twenty two fiscal year and the twenty twenty three fiscal year, the premiums would have needed to be about twenty two percent higher than they were. So for the premiums to bring in the amount that we paid out. Now, last year, the board did adopt changes to the premium schedule. And so I, I went back and looked at that and calculated sort of what the average increase in premiums were, that were in those rate increases, and that came out to about fourteen point eight percent. So that's less than the twenty two percent that I'm estimating, we're short by every year. So although it, things should be better for the second half of the fiscal year, because now those new premiums just took effect in January, I'm pretty sure we're still gonna come out short.
And those documents, by the way, are on Board Doc.
Yeah, and they're, and they're attached to tonight's agenda for everyone to look at.
Other questions for Dr. Edwards before we? All right, thank you. Item five is update on elementary rezoning process.
Yes. So just to take everybody back from where we were with our facilities master plan and the board's vote and where we are. So our, one of our immediate next steps was to go back and work with MGT to start looking at what a rezoning, a potential rezoning process would look like to get us to closer to home zoning. So what we like, like to do is give you an update about where we are in terms of the process and the thinking, because we think it's important, important for people to understand how we're approaching this task. And then some timelines as to when we expect to be able to actually bring some, some maps to the public, to you all, for review. So we're gonna kind of tag team a little bit with going over that, so. Start with Dr. Wood.
Thank you, Dr. Edwards, and good evening again. This is, as, as Dr. Edwards said, this is an opportunity for us to kind of give information on where we are with the rezoning process. We don't have a rezoning map for you tonight, but we do have just information. We also really wanted to provide some context in addition to what Dr. Edwards said, or why the close-to-home zoning conversation sort of got started. And then differentiate that between some of the other conversations we've, we've heard in the community and where we are right now. So if you go to the next slide, we'll just give an overview of what we're gonna do this evening. Brief background, also talk about the existing elementary attendance zones and sort of why we're having the conversation that we are. And then really explain the close-to-home concept as we have interpreted it in, in differentiating again from the sort of neighborhood schools conversation, and really saying what we're looking at as a close-to-home zoning process. So ultimately, then we'll talk about our, our process status as well. So as you know, the elementary attendance zoning plan was established in the nineteen seventies as a result of the need to desegregate our schools. And since that time, there has been a number of changes, but they really have been more incremental changes as there've been just sort of needed to move certain boundaries. Or in, in the intervening time, there have been a number of elementary schools that have closed during that time. So Garland Road is elementary, Peekland Elementary, Kaiser has closed. So there've been a number that have closed during that time. And so, of course, at that time, then the zoning map would have changed to some extent to address those, as well as different capacity needs and that sort of thing. And so as, as we are all aware, on October twenty fourth, part of the actions that the school board took would take effect in the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six school years included, of course, the consolidation of Sandusky and TC Miller, the expansion of Bass Elementary Schools, Elementary School, and the enacting the close-to-home zoning concept. And so we really wanted to kind of talk through again the current status, as well as provide that context around why that's the conversation and an important part of our facility's master plan. No action to take tonight, but we just want you to see kind of where we are and let you know that we are considering this from a number of different angles. And it certainly is something that is, that is a complex, very complex process, that has a lot of different facets that we want to consider. So if you go to the next slide, just talk, we're talking through the existing elementary zones. And I'm gonna do this in a number of pictures, as we look at our zones. If you know much about me, you'll know that I really like maps, and I think they, they teach us a lot about who we are and where, where we live. So usually in our meetings, we have Hayden holding our map for us, but we'll put it on the screen if you go to the next slide. So. So this is the existing elementary zoning map. And so the different colors that you see are really important, because it shows where in the city certain students are assigned to go to elementary school. And so what you'll see is that there are colors that are similar to one another, but they're sort of across the city. And that's intentionally designed, right? Because we wanted to make sure at the time in the nineteen seventies that, and today, that we have integrated schools. And as we know, cities tend to be separated sort of racially, and that's just the nature of our city and many cities throughout the country. Now, this was intentioned to, again, create a more diverse set of schools in the city. But you'll note where the sort of satellite zones for those schools tend to be. So you have, for instance, around Paramount, that's sort of middle of the city, dark, dark purple-blue area. That's sort of the neighborhood around that area that, that attends Paramount. And then you'll see an area that's sort of in the downtown College Hill, Diamond Hill kind of area. You also see that with a certain area that is assigned to Sandusky and to Paul Monroe and to Bedford Hills, and particularly to Heritage. And so there's a tendency, if you take a look just at the, the way things occurred, to move folks that were living downtown into these sort of outer lying school areas, right? And so what the result of that certainly resulted in certainly more diverse schools. But it also resulted in much longer transportation times. It also resulted in a more difficult time for families to engage with their students' education. And so there are pros and cons to the work that was done. And so what we want to do is just talk through a couple of those particular areas, because it's easy to look at this larger map and say, okay, this is sort of interesting. But I wanted to look at the, some very specific areas to show you kind of some things that are just strange in the way that the zones are designed. So if you go to the next slide, this is sort of in what we call sort of Diamond Hill South. The sixteenth street at Taylor Street, sixteen, fifteenth, sixteenth area. You'll see in this sort of two or three block radius, you have one, two, three, four schools that are represented. And in fact, you have certain properties that for one reason or another were zoned to one school, and their next door neighbors being zoned elsewhere. And then you have properties across the street from one another, where students go to school at one school in case, you know, the, the blue and the purple might be Sandusky, and I believe it's Sheffield. The same case with Paramount, and then you see RS Payne there as well. So when we think about the development of a neighborhood, a really important part is the relationship that it might have with a school and the, and the education that students receive and the, the kids that live there. So when you have this situation, it's very difficult to develop and maintain cohesion in the neighborhood that's around a certain school. And so we're thinking about how the impacts of those decisions at that time might have affected certainly the school, but also the neighborhoods that they were a part of. And so if you go to the next slide, another example comes to us from the Daniels Hill area of the city, actually probably on the other side of Rivermont Avenue from there. In this sort of one block radius where the, the yellow block is, again, you'll see Linkhorn, you'll see Bedford Hills, and you'll see Paul Monroe. Again, number one, a long way from those schools, and number two, again, neighbors going to different schools. Again, creating a difficulty of having that sort of school-community cohesion around it.
These seem to be more like exceptions as opposed to rules.
Well.
What is the reason for this one household going?
I don't know, and that's a really great question. And, and to have that as a zone, I'm not sure, like, you know, we might have a, it makes sense to have a student that attends another school because of a superintendent placement for whatever reason may be there. But to have the zoning be set for that, I, I can't answer that question. I, I don't know why that would, that would be that.
Has this always been this way since you've been in, in this position?
Yeah.
Okay, so maybe, maybe there was some sort of rule somewheres that you have to zone it, you can't just move kids or something like that?
Can't, can't say that, I'm not sure, but, but it's, you know.
Possible.
Maybe, but I can't, I can't speak to why one address would be zoned to one school or not. I, I just, I don't know.
Again, it seems like an exception, and those children might not even be there now.
That's right, that's right.
Yeah.
It probably has been there. It certainly had grown up, right, if, if not being.
Maybe they had eight children or something.
Something.
Yeah. So that's, that's, again, another example, and then sort of the south side of that part of the property, you see the same kind of thing going on. You see just sort of these odd superimposed school zones that, again, really split the neighborhoods up and don't allow for that cohesion around that elementary school. We know that's so important in a, in a community to, to embrace around a school and a school to embrace around a community. So that is a challenge in this sort of part of the town.
Question, we're, we're discussing something that might not even be valid anymore. To what extent is, are these numbers valid? Because we're talking, we just made mention that the children might not even be in these houses. We don't know why it was rezoned. We don't even know the, do you have the numbers for these?
For, for, we're gonna talk about that.
Okay, all right.
Yep. So I'm just, I'm just kind of giving examples of the, the weird things that, that were done. And, and, and I, I don't know that I, I would characterize this as a sort of systemic thing around certain parts of the city that, that we know, right? And, and Dr. Edwards is gonna, in a few minutes, gonna go through what those different differentiations may be compared to what it was intended to be in the nineteen seventies. So if you go to the next slide, this is another one that we all know about. This is a Heritage District. This is either the Florida Avenue, Tyriana, so this is largely focused on the James Crossing neighborhood. But certainly there are other residences and neighborhoods around that that, that are part of that. You can see where that, that green dot is, that's where Bass Elementary School is. And so you have a, a pretty significant landmass that represents a number of students that are transitioning from that, that, that home, that, that part of the city to Heritage Elementary School, which we know is very much on the other side of the city and spending a lot of time on the school bus. Last year, I'll say, I spent some time riding around with, on a, on a Saturday, all the Sandusky Middle School teachers got on a, on our first electric bus that we have and rode around and, and just kind of looked at the neighborhoods where their students came from. And we just rode really one of the routes, and I, I was so seasick by the route that I, I, the, the need for students to be relatively close and have a reduced transportation time is really important. Now, that doesn't negate the need to have diverse schools, and we'll talk about that more. But that is an issue that we do need to talk about. So this is, was one that really is, is on our minds a lot.
How many of them go to Bass Elementary from this neighborhood?
Around.
This is Heritage color?
No, no, no.
Heritage is red.
This is Heritage. These people are going to Bass.
Well, these are going to Bass.
Yep. And that's sort of through the woods from, from Bass, so it's not like it, it conjoins to Bass Elementary, but it's, and, and this is different than RS Payne, but that, it is really close. And it's, it would be a lot easier for a family to take the bus there or walk to that school as opposed to engaging at Heritage. Heritage is a wonderful school. They do an incredible job reaching out and having family events. Ms. Anderson there is, is incredibly committed to that work and does, does a great job. But again, it's still harder for a family to engage in that, right? So we know that.
Do we get a lot of superintendent placements from the kids who are low, live near Bass and are zoned to go to Heritage to be able to go to Bass?
Well, Bass you can apply for, so they do have that option to apply to Bass. But I don't know that we get a lot of the kids who are in that area that actually apply to stay there.
On the, on the next slide, I, I did want to just point out that this is not entirely related to, to just that part of town. This is the sort of Sandusky, Sheffield, Paramount area as well. So there are some, some odd districts, I think probably were established. My, my guess is where you had housing developments pop up and there were maybe, maybe were, there was capacity in certain schools. We said, okay, we'll just bring those kids to Sheffield or wherever the case may be. But in this, in this document, you can see, or this slide, you can see Paramount, Sandusky, Sheffield, and RS Payne as being represented here. So again, a confusing network of, of, of zones. And again, challenges with creating that sort of neighborhood cohesion. Again, not entirely focused on the downtown area part of the town, but it certainly is the most prevalent there. So we're gonna go to a couple of slides that really focus on that side of town and that, that part of the city to reflect on the, the number of students that. If you go to the next slide, this is the, the, how the, again, this is the sort of College Hill, Dan, Diamond Hill, then sort of westerly out Twelfth Street and Fort Avenue, and you'll see the, the TC Miller District as well. Just how split up this set of attendance zones is. And again, if you, if you, the Paramount District that you see, that, that goes from right about where RS Payne is, or one block away from that, down to the river, same thing with the Sandusky Zone there and the Sheffield Zone. So again, I, with rightfully so, with, with very good intentions, this was designed with, and, and did the right thing to, to diversify our schools. But again, there is, there are drawbacks to that perspective where, again, we have, we have taken the neighborhood cohesion that's developed around a school and made that very challenging. And it happens to be very pronounced in certain parts of town. That's just a reality that I think that we can see from these maps. And you'll see the, you'll see where RS Payne is, right in the middle, that, that, that green dye. So we're gonna go around a couple of these, and I just want to show you like just the literally places where students live right now around that school, and I could show you how close they are, in particular to RS Payne, and they're transiting across the city. Again, Heritage, Paramount, Sandusky, Sheffield, great places to go to school, wonderful, wonderful people. But they're, but how much better would it be potentially to be able to walk one block to school than it would be to ride a bus thirty to forty minutes, right? So I think that's, I think that's, there's lots of conversations to be had about that and lots of perspectives. So I think that's, I think that's, there's lots of conversations to be had about that and lots of perspectives on there. So I just want to go through a couple of those zones that are right around there. The first one, this sort of current Paramount students, it shows you, these are, these are physical locations where students are living. And you can see that, that big green dot is RS Payne and you'll see all the students that are, that are attending Paramount there. So, so big ones there. So the other ones out in other parts, there may be superintendent placements or other reasons they might be there for one reason or another. But again, these are, these are families that live, again, very close to the school and would be traveling a long way to their school. The next one is Sandusky students, these again, this is about three blocks from, from RS Payne in particular. And you can see the number of students that are there, that, that sort of cluster that's right, right around that, that sort of strange area we looked at before. And the last one I think is Sheffield. Those are, there's a sort of a cluster of students that are in that, that area. So these are, these are students that are again, living in our part of a neighborhood that they can see an elementary school and we drive them across town to, to attend another school, again, for very, very important reasons that, that matter a lot. But again, we need to think about the larger picture effects of that. And again, of course, also transportation is much more complicated as a result and much more expensive as well.
So the basis of those, let's just take this slide right here, of those individual dots going across town, have you looked at them individually or how, how much are discipline issues? How much are separating two people that have conflict? Or it was an issue of a disciplinary, an assault as an example?
So, so are you talking about these, the, I'm not sure I understand which ones you're talking, are you talking about the cluster of dots?
The ones that are moving, the dots, those are the children that are going across town. They are, you have enough dots there to be able to know who they are. So there is either it was requested by a parent or it was determined by a disciplinary action? Well, no, I'm just saying as examples, I don't know, I'm asking you.
Yeah, sure, so, so maybe I can clarify one thing and I may not have been clear. So the, the cluster of dots there that's in that purple area, those are students that are zoned for Sheffield and going to Sheffield, right?
That's their zone.
That's three blocks.
That's their zone.
Three blocks away and I, and I probably didn't say that, I'm, so I'm, I'm in it all the time, so I'm not.
No, no, I can't. He said it, he said it.
Okay, but then there's others that are around there, they, those may be some sort of student placement, I'm not sure what they would be necessarily. But I just wanted, I just wanted, the, the point of the slide is to say, I have this, we have this pretty significant cluster of students, geographic cluster of students that are zoned in this area that again is about three or four blocks away from this, this elementary school that has capacity, but yet we're, we're taking them across town and we are not doing that, again, to the same extent in other parts of the city. And that's a reality, right? And we have to, we just have to confront that reality.
I have a question. So if, when we go with a, if we go with a close home zoning, does RS Payne have the room, you said capacity, for all the children that will stop traveling so far away to walk to school? Is there enough rooms in the building for classes?
So the, the zones will change and so the, the, because the students from over here might not, might no longer go to school or they may go somewhere else, so there.
Or they might be going to middle school or.
Yeah, so there will be, there will be, we'll need to make sure we're very careful about making sure we're staying within capacities and that's part of the work that MGT is responsible for.
Okay.
In other words, the zones will be designed so that does not happen.
Right, so we're making sure that our utilizations are efficient but not over.
Yeah, overcrowding.
Now, you know, there are, there may be challenges in terms of capacities, right? That we, that we do have to deal with in terms of that, so we're working through that right now.
What is the class size at which we start losing funding?
It depends on the school, so it depends on your, your, the schools for K two.
K three.
K two.
K three.
K three, I'm sorry. It depends on the, the percentage of students with free and reduced lunch or lower, so, so, so every school is different. And that's, it could be, it could be nineteen or it could be twenty-three.
Twenty-four. The high schools, Paul Monroe's cap is twenty-four. Some of the lower schools.
Darrington's like nineteen, I think, or is Darrington?
Darrington, TC Miller, no, TC Miller's like twenty, Darrington is nineteen.
And they base that, based on the school lunch?
It's a three-year average of the S and P information that's free, reduced lunch information that comes from the school nutrition department. So I get that information and I do a three-year average each year. And then the VDOE has a table, you know, so if it's between this percent and this percent, it's nineteen. And, you know, the next, so, you know, the, the lower the percentage, obviously the higher the cap, but it goes from nineteen to twenty-four.
And the free. Okay, I'm gonna formulate a question. Thank you very much for that, I have a question, I just put it to words, thank you.
So that's my discussion of maps that I do deeply love and I like talking about it. And I think it, I hope, hopefully that is, gives you a good representation of the, the sort of spatial characteristics of, of where students are transitioning throughout the city. This person looks like he has a question, I don't know.
Is, is there any value to looking at the population and determining based on the size of the school, what would be the ideal number of students that should attend that school? And what, and determining the proximity that that should include? And then that way we could compare the color scheme of the new designations to the current designations to determine how many students would actually have to move or, or, you know, or what things would look like.
It's a, it's a great point, absolutely. So we, we were doing all that work kind of in the, in the background right now, understanding what, what the new demographics might look like at the, at the potential new zones. We're not, just not quite there yet in understanding what those capacities might be. I don't know that we're, as, we are detailed enough to say certainly race and socioeconomic status. I don't know that we would be down to the individual student level in terms of their individual needs just because I'm, I'm not sure we could design a, a zone that would address all of those issues. But I do think that we're, we're definitely looking at those particular characteristics to make sure that we are being at least, at least representative of the, a division and hopefully as diverse as we possibly can. And I, oh, good.
Well, at the beginning of this slide, there was an asterisk next to, this is depending on the Bass addition?
I got kids, I'm used to it.
The, when we, the vote, so when we put option three on there, it was option three with Bass additions.
Okay, so how much does it change if there isn't?
So Bass addition was about ten extra classrooms plus some extra space for the kids. So we would have to reconfigure based on if we don't have that extra space there.
And what steps are we doing to make sure, I know you talked a little bit, Dr. Wodoka, regarding making sure that we are still adhering to the, say, integrated schools?
That's me.
So again, maybe Dr. Evers is not gonna talk to you about the demographics.
Okay.
I have a, I have a couple. I think, Mr. Paul, the, the, the issues that you were asking about, the students individual, would be those blue dots that are outside of the pink or fuchsia, whatever color it is.
I got you.
Follow up to this, are you guys putting together a model? I mean, is it geographic based model, GIS system model that does all this stuff?
Yes.
Okay, so you, and you put in whatever parameters are necessary.
And it's not just us, it's MGT.
MGT.
Right, oh yeah.
MGT is doing it.
Yeah, yeah.
Just give them a hard time, yeah.
MGT, so they're, they're putting together a model, I guess it's a geographic information systems based model to do all this stuff. And you'll be able to run sensitivity analysis on that based upon modification of different parameters.
Yeah, so, so as the zones are designed and processed, they can move the zones around and that sort of in real time tells you what the different demographics of the school would be based on today's enrollment, right? So we don't know what that's gonna be five years from now, but you kind of have to do that. What I would say is that what we should do, you know, every five years or so, we should go back, take a look and see where we are again as things need to be adjusted, we shouldn't go this long without at least doing a, a look at some point in the future.
And, and the intellectual property behind the model, are we gonna own that from the consultant? So you'll be, you'll have that piece of the model, the equation or what have you wanna call it and run that sensitivity analysis.
Yeah, so it's called, it's called a shape file, so it's in a GIS file, so we'll, we'll have that, we'll own that. And then as we need to make those adjustments in the future, we'll be able to do that with our partners at City GIS, so.
Perfect. I did a lot of that.
Uh, no, so, so it's, it's using the, it's called Esri ArcGIS, it's a, it's the standard geographic information system. So we, we don't have it at the schools, but the city has it in their GIS department. So that, those files will be available to us, so we will have that.
One more, one more question, the, this, this zoning was done back in the seventies?
Mostly, and again, there's been some adjustments based on schools closing and things like that, but the, the concept of.
So they did it with pencil and paper?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
And that, that was a point I, I think is important is that we do have, to your point, much better technology to be able to do that, that analysis much quicker and with much more detail than, than we would have, you know, fifty years ago.
Right, right.
Can I just, before we switch to the next slide, on this slide, there was a question about why, if these are Sheffield kids and Sheffield, I believe, is pink, why are some of the kids in the other, other schools? So we do have other options for parents, so parents can apply for what we call babysitter hardship. And what that means is if they have no way of being home when their child is, you know, returns home on the bus and maybe their babysitter lives near, you know, Bass or a different school, they can apply to, to have their child go there. So we do have elementary students in different schools based on parent requests. We try our best to honor those, as many requests as we can.
And I was, my children did that because we have no family here, so I'm thankful for babysitter hardship, helped out a lot, so yeah.
The other thing that we do, we did as a, as a perk, I guess, is with our employees who have children in the division and we allow them to put in a request as to what works best for their family. Because if our employees are happy and their children are well, well, therefore, that's better for us too. So you may, you may see some of that as well with it.
Can I say one more thing just about the, the map, right? So what is, I think impactful and important for me as I, as I think through this is that this, this sort of group of students in that, in that purple block there are traveling across the city have long bus rides. Now, we have other students from other parts of the city go to the GO Center, go to the Schools of Innovation or, or isn't, might have a longer bus ride, but that's by choice. And the way that we've zoned here is not by choice and, and families are, and there's long bus rides because we've told them they have to. And I think that's, that's an important distinction in terms of the equity of the conversation.
Yes, but, but with the impetus on trying to allow students to go through kind of a scheme of things to, from elementary to middle to high school, if I'm an arts person or if I'm a science person or whatever, what kind of impact is that gonna have on, on these numbers and busing and?
Yeah, it's a great question, so, and I don't know how far we want to get into that tonight, but on the sort of excellence by design framework that we, we put together, our, our vision of that would be that there would be a certain number of invited seats like we have in our Schools of Innovation. And so there would be some movement around, but it would, most students would be in their sort of zoned school, but there would be an opportunity to have that choice. But again, it's a choice to do that rather than, than, than being forced.
And it's always open to the parents to take their kids if they're choosing to do that too, they don't have to ride a bus.
Yeah.
Have you done the thirty thousand foot view of just taking the dots and switching them over to each place that they would be if they weren't rezoned farther away from your school?
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll get to that in just a few minutes, I'll show you, I'll tell you the process where.
All right, and secondly, is it any relevance at all that the circumference of this and this, of each one that are matched colors? I'm not sure if that's matched, but if the circumference in this model and the new model are gonna be equal or no?
You mean the total area?
The total sum, yeah, of each.
Um, I, I don't know that the, the land area will be the same. I, I don't, I don't think that will be the case, but I don't, I don't know that, but it'll be different, I think.
Depends on population density too. So, you know, you might have an area where the houses are very spread out as opposed to apartment complexes where we might have more students, so.
So Dr. Evers is gonna talk about.
He's been trying to give it away, okay. Okay, so just to go back in time as to the, the why our maps look that way, we, we all know that we were under a DSEG order where we were, where Lynchburg City Schools was pretty much like, desegregate these elementary schools now, rather than, I think one of the original plans was, we'll do one grade level at a time over the next thirteen years from K to, K to twelve and, and that wasn't acceptable by courts. The original DSEG order actually has it by streets, so I guess it depended on who was living where at the time, which might explain why certain areas are here, there and everywhere. So that's, that's a little bit of the history of where, where we are. Here is our current division demographics so that you can see just in, in a very simplistic way of looking at it, which is also on our attendance reports, we're about seventy-one percent minority students and twenty-nine percent white, non-Hispanic students. And that's gonna be important as we look at some of the changes going forward. And again, we have this broken down by black, white, Asian, which you all, you know, can get that from our demographics, but for, for tonight, just to show you that. So on the next slide, there you go, the next slide, and I have to look at my screen, not there. This is where we are as of our January thirtieth report in each of the schools. So you can see the differences in the schools now, remember, some of our schools are really small, so we have about two hundred students. So percentages can be a little, remember, smaller school percentage, each kid is a higher percentage. But this is what we currently look like and then that's how you can get our division wide, our, across the division, what, what we look like. If you go to the next slide, we went back in time to where we actually had data broken across the same sort of metrics that we have right now. So it's almost apples to apples to the best that we could about nine years ago just to see what did Lynchburg look like then and what was our population then? And it's not too far off, you can see some, some changes in some schools between January twenty twenty-four and January twenty fifteen, how we looked a little bit different. You can definitely see a change in the division wide population as we look at percentages going across. And then on the next slide, which we're gonna take a pause for, for a second. Ooh, that, those colors don't show up the same as they do on my, on my screen. Here, what we did was take the current demographics, and this is just racial demographics. We also have to look at this from gender and, and a couple of other things which I'll share with you. And what we did was sort of rank them from the outliers all the way into where you see Paramount, Sheffield and Sandusky. Those three elementary schools more model the division average of where we are right now. And then you'll see as you move into what is pink on your screen, purple on mine, that's about five to nine percent different from division average. And then as you move to yellow, and mine is orange, that's about a little bit over ten percent. Now, why is that important? Let me just give you this so that you refresh your memory. I'm probably gonna end up somewhere down there, just to make sure that they're about fifteen.
Need some more?
So one of the things that we want to make sure that we do, remember that's part of the desegregation order and should we go ahead and pursue unitary status at some point were what were the green factors? Not for the color green, but for the original case for which these factors are. And there are six factors, one of them being student assignment. So I just wanna really focus on green factor number one, you can look at the other ones and we can talk, certainly talk about those at a later date. But if you look at the student assignment and when you look at the racial composition of each school, in order to successfully meet the green factor, you have to be within, and I think it's like fifteen percent for the division average, which is why we looked at it this way to say, where are we right now? And then as we look at rezoning, we wanna be mindful that we don't wanna shift too much out of what would be an acceptable arrangement for the green factors in terms of, and that, that's just looking at race right now. We also don't want a school full of young men, just all men or all women, gender based school, so we look at that as well. So there are a couple of different things as we play with this model to make sure that we don't sort of imbalance the school. We wanna make sure that we have that, that demographics down pat. But there is some flexibility in that, which is why I brought back out the green factors. I know it's been a while since we've looked at these, just so that the board can remember that those are the things that we're trying. I know it's been a while since we've looked at these, just so that the board can remember that those are the things that we're trying to do. So when we get the new zoning plans, our goals are to try to stay within these boundaries. This is kind of guiding us in our work. We know what our division population is right now, which is a good thing that Dr. Whitaker said we really should be looking at this about every five years just to make sure that we're still in line with where we need to be. So I want to take a pause here for a second and see if you have any questions about that.
I have a question. And I, this, this is just like a think kind of thing. So like as a side job, I do Instacart. I'm all over the place. And in all parts of the cities, there's all kinds of housing, different housing. So whether it's apartment complex, whether it's single homes, and I run into all kinds of people from all the racial backgrounds. So when go to close to home zoning, would that really change that much since people can live anywhere in the city, no matter who you are?
So when you say when, when we go to close to.
Yeah, like though people, well, when you redo the zones, we're worried about the racial imbalance. But people can live anywhere in the city, no matter your income. So now, because we have all kinds of different housing availability for whatever suits your pocketbook kind of thing, your, your income. So I'm just thinking, would it really throw us where we would be out of this? Because, I mean, whether, whether you live closer to Heritage, whether you live closer to Perrymont, whether you live closer to Palm Monroe, whether you live closer to Red Hills, there's housing, different housing in all the areas in the city now.
I think we, when we do it, because we, we do Geo Maps sort of our students, we'll be able to see that as opposed to, and I'm sure that people in nineteen seventies would love this technology, rather than kind of guessing and saying, we think this neighborhood and, and this neighborhood, which is what, if I had to make an assumption, is what, what they did. So to your point, yes, we still want our schools to have that rich diversity because it is throughout our city. But we just want to make sure and let the math and the Geo mapping show us that, yes, you still have that rich diversity.
I think it's, I think it's important to understand that when these new zones are finalized, they're not determined just by the distance from the school to the, to the student. They're also designed to accommodate these things. They're also designed to accommodate the disparity between males and females. They're also designed to accommodate differences in economic levels. That's why they look at the school lunch thing. That's a crude measure of economic status. All of those criteria are being considered. It's not just how far from your house to the school.
Yes.
We have to find a way to design zones that meet all those things. And that's what makes it incredibly difficult.
That might be the reason why you had one house go into another school back in nineteen seventy.
Because that was the way they could fix it.
Yeah, I get it. I get it.
Questions? Before we transition?
So for the public, and I know there's concerns, you know, if you think of, of some possibilities. One of the reasons for showing this and bringing this here is just to reassure the public that this is on our mind. This is definitely what we're looking at. This is definitely where, what we're considering. We're taking a, a deep look at where we are right now. And as we look at making new zones, where will that put us? But we also want to be accountable for where are we and where are we going? So that we don't run the risk of putting us back in pre nineteen seventy. That's not what we're, what we want to do. We really want to make sure, we want to accomplish a couple of different things. We want to make sure kids and families have access to their schools. We also want to fix our transportation bus shortage to really make that a little bit better, as well as providing wonderful opportunities all across our city. All right. So we are going to transition to close to home zoning and why we call that close to home zoning as opposed to going to a neighborhood school. So we want to talk a little bit about just those approaches.
Yes, absolutely. So we just want to, again, very clearly differentiate between the concepts that we have here. And so what we did is just created this chart. We've set, I think, all of these things that are on this, on this chart once or, or more again tonight, but I want to say them again because I think it matters. And so we should continue to reiterate that as we go forward, because this, these are very, very important conversations. So I'm going to start on the two outer sides. We differentiate between the close to home, or those, those concepts and the close to home concept. So the first one on the left side is the current zoning strategy. As I said before, this was designed primarily in the nineteen seventies, primarily focused on school desegregation. Again, very, very important work and also very importantly resulted in far more diverse schools than what were at the time, just sort of based on what the neighborhood demographics were at that time. We also know that the city has changed in many respects during that time. Neighborhoods have changed in terms of their demographics. Those are just things that happened over a fifty year period in, in, in a city. Again, we primarily relied on bussing students across town, oftentimes long distances. And the result of that was that students had long bus rides or, and also families oftentimes had difficulty connecting with their, with their school. And in really, it, it just sort of largely creates this very confusing system. Again, as I said before, where a family maybe live across the street from someone who is a big part of their life as a, as a neighbor. But then they go to different schools, the two different kids go to schools and, uh, two different, different schools. And so that's troubling, that I'm not saying that that can always be resolved and always, because there has to be delineation points at some point. But we can try to reduce that as much as we possibly can as we go forward in the future. On the right side of the screen, you'll see what we call sort of neighborhood schools. That's a term we've heard a lot of folks say. But we want to be clear that that's not an approach or a term or a, and, or a concept that has been advocated for or adopted or been a part of the facilities master plan process. And the differentiation between that and what we're talking about with close to home is, as Dr. Day said just a few minutes ago, that, that a neighborhood school's approach is entirely focused on geography and, and, and school assignment and really not taking into account the very, very complex demographics of the city, right? So there's lots of demographics that, that need to make sense. And again, if we were to do that, if we just said, let's draw a circle around each school and just find the closest place, of course, because of what we know about our city and cities across the country, it's likely would create very segregated schools. We know those things and we are absolutely not advocating for that and absolutely not looking for a process that would do that. Again, would dramatically, of course, reduce the complexity of transportation, but not at the, the cost of resegregating schools. So, so absolutely not the approach that close to home zoning is. That is not the intent. That was never, I, I don't believe that was ever the intent of the board. And I think that's, I think that's fair for everyone to say. So we take those two approaches, saying there's some things that are, that we've learned from what's been done in the past and things that we know we don't want to do. We go to this close to home concept, close to home zoning concept, where we leverage that understanding that we have of our city's demographics and the technology that we have to help do the analysis of the work so that we can maintain or even improve the diversity of our schools where we possibly can. Focus on reducing bus times and increasing family connections to their, to their schools where, where we possibly can. So these are complex things. That doesn't always mean that it's possible that a student will go to the absolute closest school to them. There may be, there may be individual students who may go to the next closest or something like that. But, but hopefully largely and across the city as a system, we're getting closer to home than we are now. And again, and this is very important, I think, to thinking about how a school division impacts its larger community. And it's thinking about how we can help build cohesion throughout a neighborhood by wrapping around a school and wrapping around a neighborhood, as a school wraparound the neighborhood, so that we can continue to grow that relationship that a school might have with the neighborhood. We think that's very, very important. And again, that's a very important differentiation between the sort of very crude neighborhood schools concept and what we hope to achieve in this process we, as we go forward. So again, this is not something that's simple to do. It's easy to sort of say, just do this and, or whatever, but it's not a simple process. And this takes time to do well and, and do it effectively. So certainly would take any questions you might have. I think we've talked about all of these things already tonight, but I wanted to reiterate them so that we knew exactly, clearly what the intent of the process is.
I'd just like to comment that I don't think this would be possible without modern technology.
No.
We're very dependent on that to handle the, the large amount of data, the multiple criteria we're trying to weigh and balance against each other. And this kind of thing, twenty years ago, we couldn't do it.
Yeah.
You're using Esri, and they've been around for a long time, since nineteen sixty-nine or something like that. I mean, I used them, I used them at twenty years ago when we're doing trade areas around service stations. I've got to imagine, and they've got a, are we using Esri? Is M J T using Esri programmers to do it? I got to imagine Esri has done this.
Absolutely.
Other school divisions, if not the Department of Justice, because the Department of Justice does the same kind of thing when they're looking at competitive analysis.
It's a similar process that this, that the city's election board uses to design voter precincts. So they, there's a process in the technology that you can, again, move the lines two blocks this way or whatever and understand how that changes the demographics of a precinct. Obviously, this is a very, you know, it's a very sensitive topic.
Sure.
Even, probably even more so than, than, than the voting precincts. Even, you know, a voting precinct is tremendously important, right? And I think that's, that's the complicated work that's being done.
But getting along the lines of any scrutiny that we may be subject to by the Department of Justice, I, I mean, either we or M J T should go to Esri and say, hey, listen, I mean, we know you guys do this kind of thing for Department of Justice. Keep us within the, the, the boundaries so that we're, we're past whatever muster we're worried about with the green factors. And they can do it. I mean, and they got the models, so.
That was, that was the absolute reason for exploring this first before we got to zoning, because we want to make sure that whatever changes we made, we wouldn't run afoul here.
Perfect. I think great, fantastic.
And our last slide on this topic, if there's no other questions, just again, reiterating those goals, again, maintaining in where we possibly can improve the diversity of our schools within our division, making sure that we are being reflective of our community and our wider division, of school division. Again, really, really important to us and important to our community is having that opportunity for families, you know, parents, grandparents, whoever the case may be in a child's life, their ability to connect and be a part of their school community is tremendously important. And, and, and you, you see the, you see the points that are there. And I don't think it, I don't think anything matters more than that. And the ability to just build that cohesion and that wraparound of, of an elementary school is tremendously important. So we'll finish up just the next couple of slides. We'll just talk about process. And let's just kind of see where we are. So in February, we got the sort of first draft of the initial zones, and we provided some initial comments. There were some things in, about the initial draft that we knew were not going to work. As an example, Bedford Hills was sort of underutilized in this model, and Heritage was overutilized. And so there's some things that needed to move around, so we could, we could see that pretty quickly. We provided those comments back. They're going to give the next draft that we're going to then review with elementary school principals, because we think it's important for them to have a, have a view of it first, get their comments. And then we'll bring at that point a sort of a final draft to the school board, hopefully on, on April ninth. That's our plan right now. Hopefully that'll be the, that'll be the intended time. And then the next couple of months, we'll go out, we'll do our, our roadshow again and get, get community feedback, bring that feedback back to you, make adjustments as necessary. And then hopefully have a work session later in May to kind of go through those final maps that they're presenting. So a couple of iterations there. Again, another community feedback opportunity, making sure that there's opportunities to hear about the approach. And again, this is assuming, this is based on the assumption that we will continue the, the decisions that were made for twenty-five, twenty-six.
I have a question.
This is Laurie.
So in the February of the, this month, they've already done this or it's going to be done by the end of the month?
It's, it's, so it's been done and we provided comments already back.
Okay.
Based on those two things I mentioned, the, the utilization of Bedford Hills and Heritage. And so there's a couple of little things that we, we pointed out, just the.
Okay. And the second was the community feedback, is that going to be like before where you go to the schools and put it in the computer? Or if they fill out a survey, it's going to be sent out? How will they do that?
We haven't designed that, that process yet.
Okay.
I would imagine we'll do, we'll do probably a, an electronic version and probably an in-person version too, just like we have done a number of times. And we'll provide that feedback to you and, and just so you know what folks are thinking. And there, of course, I think there is a required public hearing before we were to make, take a final vote.
Dr. Carter?
I was, when you talked about we need to revisit, revisit this more often than this amount of time, which is true. But then I'm thinking that will lead to a change in your school zone. So for the rigid students out there like me, that would be a problem unless we build in that type of mindset that we're going to look at changing every so many years, you know, to accommodate.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. But I think the, the approach might be, and this might be an, an opportunity that's different than, you know, take a, a Northern Virginia county that is growing really fast. And so they're moving districts all the time. If you do it more often, it seems to me that slight adjustments might be able to be made. And then, you know, if you have a fourth grader, you would be able to allow that student maybe potentially to stay in that school as, as they, until they finish or something like that. So if you did it more often, you wouldn't have much, you know, what we're going to see is potentially pretty significant changes to what the zones look like. And I would think if you did it more often, those, those changes would be much smaller over time. And again, that would, might provide the opportunity for you to allow people to sort of grandfather in through the remainder of their term there, and then it would grow out. But I don't know. I, that, that's kind of what my thought is on why you would want to do it more often.
You had another one? I have a question, sir.
No, I'm finished.
My, I know based on your calendar, you're bringing it back to the board by April ninth. That's the final product. But I hope the board will be more involved in the, as you, like you have the preliminary draft right now, right?
It's not, so it's just really not ready. It's not, it's not, it's not done. So we really need to, we really need to not, because it, it's, if you get lots of versions out there, then it gets really confusing.
So but if you, you don't want to make it a public disclosure yet, I hope you'll involve the board committees like Academic Success Committee to run through them before April as you're collecting feedback from the principals. Because it's important to have a collaborative process. And number two, having the community leaders involved. Maybe you can do a confidential meeting. I have N double A C P president here. The community, I know you're doing community feedback, but the leaders will be, will be the champions of this proposal in the initial stages, not when this, after April ninth presentation.
That's a fair, that's a fair statement. Yep, absolutely.
And I think one of the reasons too, just to take it at the building levels, is there are things about communities and areas that we know that building principals and building teachers know about a particular area that we need to take into consideration as we're also looking at this. And we just want to be mindful that we cover all of our bases before we say this is it or, or anything like that and take into consideration all the needs of, of, of what our community needs.
Because the board should be involved in the developing process or at least informed during the developing process. Not getting the final product ready, saying sell it now. Mr. Jalil?
Dr. Edwards, you said that there was a possibility of reconfiguration with Bass, whether or not it has the addition to it? Are you going to have that? Are we going to have both?
Well, hopefully we'll have a little more information about where we're going with Bass. I mean, by the April ninth, but yes, we would have to definitely plan for.
Okay.
Whatever that.
Are you planning to do the same with making T C Miller a hybrid school?
I've not gotten direction to make T C Miller a hybrid school since you all voted. I mean, unless there's another vote at that.
Yeah, that's not, that's not included in what the board has decided.
What's that, Ms. Carter? Dr. Carter?
That's our vote.
Yeah.
And that wasn't our vote.
Right?
Right.
Dr. Carter?
What, what I was saying is that's not on Dr. Edwards. This entire, the vote was five to four, that we made the, that closure to T C Miller and Sandusky. It wasn't Dr. Edwards. It was on us. So the question you asked her, that's a question for us.
Got it. So it hasn't changed since then?
Right.
There hasn't been any other, okay. So it'll only have to be, it would only come up with a reconsideration of that vote? Got it.
Thank you, Dr. Edwards. Next item is the policy discussion.
All right. We are now into policies with the exception of this first one, which there's Shepard. These policies were actually brought to the board in September for the first reading.
and somehow, we did not bring them back for the second reading and approval. So, these are the HR policies that you have seen. And I do have Ms. Shepherd online, if there are any questions about these policies. But this set is up for approval.
So, we're not going to go through them one by one, you're just asking as a group, are there any questions?
If there are any additions, yeah. We went through them one by one when we first brought them in September.
Okay, so that's been a while since, my memory doesn't extend that far.
Yeah, I thought they were first read.
My, my question, do you have a question?
Go ahead.
My only question is, in all the things that are listed, have we added weed?
Have we added?
Is weed in there? Because we've had a discussion about smell in schools and things like that.
You're kind of losing all the things that are listed.
On our Academic Success Committee. Yeah, it says electronic cigarettes, electronic cigars, electronic.
Oh, you're on a specific policy?
Yes.
Oh, I thought you meant in all the policies.
No, 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 electric pipes, similar box device, and, but what about just, but I don't see weed in there.
Well, there's a separate drug policy.
For that?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
I have a question about GCL. That, let me get it open here. That had a, this is about professional development, and as I recall reading it, there's a, I can't see everything at once on my screen. There's a once-in-five-year limit on class management training. So, why do we want that limitation?
That is, is that, what's in code?
It's a new, new bill that came through.
Has to be, but we do it every year, so I think we're, we were following what code, we were putting what minimum code says, but we do offer that every year.
So, what it says is, no elementary or secondary school teacher is required to participate more than once every five years in training regarding appropriate management of student conduct and student offenses.
I think that's by code, though.
So, that's, that's a code thing, okay.
Code, but that's.
That's your record.
Yeah, yeah, I'm trying to catch up to you.
Okay, all right.
Those bills passed.
And I have another question regarding, we're P five dash twenty-two, that's the last one on this chart, about private cars for transporting students. And we're just deleting that policy. And the comment here was that this practice, the practice of using private cars for transporting students is prohibited. Where is that prohibition documented? Is that in another policy somewhere? Or is it state law, or?
No, we actually have social worker cars and things that we ask our staff if they need to either, A, have some, have somebody be picked up or have a child transport. Our principals and emergencies can take kids home if there's parental issues and things like that, so. But just a staff member to say, hey, get in my car, I want to.
So, I'm asking, is there a place where that, those inappropriate uses are documented?
I thought it was, I thought we just, we just approved some, that that was stated in there, on private use.
That's, so you're filling in my memory.
Earlier, yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
Is that true? I, I thought, I thought there was, that we just approved some that had that language in there. Or maybe it was this, that's coming back.
I don't remember.
Is there a motion to approve?
Yeah, I'll move that we, we're just talking about the, we're report, the human resource policy batch.
Yes.
So, I'll move that we approve these.
Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Clark, would you please call the roll.
Mr. Jalil.
Yes.
Mr. Andrews.
Yes.
Mr. Tross.
Yes.
Dr. Day.
Yes.
Dr. Gupta.
Yes.
Dr. Carter.
Yes.
Mrs. Preston.
Yes.
Mr. DePaul.
Yes.
Mrs. Laurie.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Operations policy.
Okay, next up, operations policies, and these are for first reads?
First reads, yeah.
All right, Dr. Wodak.
Thank you, Dr. Edwards. So, we have a number of policies that the operations, policy review committee discussed on December second for your review. The first is related to school bus scheduling, no suggested changes there. Eligible riders is the next one, with just some simple wording updates and updating the, the cross-reference as well.
Do you want questions here, or when you get them?
Maybe at the end.
Okay.
So, the, next we'll have bus stops. This is adding wording that pertains to existing practice where we do not allow pre-K to first grade students to depart a bus without a, without a parent or another responsible adult to be with them. And so, that is something that we do in practice, and so now we will have it in policy. School bus safety program, it's just a simple wording update that just changes the titles of, of positions, as well as making it very clear that damage, well, any accidents have to be reported to the director of transportation and not someone else. Standing on school buses, just added a legal reference to that, to make that clear. And then we have several more that start on compulsory use of seat belts and is down the list. While we certainly do think that, you know, use of seat belts is very important, what we try to do is say, if there's something that's in state law, we don't necessarily need to, to repeat that here. There's a fine line between making sure we say everything we can and sort of gumming up the policy manual to have lots of things. And so, there's a number of policies here that we just think are superfluous and are not required by state law, but are either reflected in another part of our policy manual or in state law differently. So, again, seat belts are required as well with law, as, as, as. Anyway, special use of school buses, there is a, just minor, well, not minor, but there's a, a number of smaller changes related to, this is a VSBA change, related to third-party logistics companies that might utilize the bus as well. The maintenance of buses, we felt like we didn't need a policy that says we're going to maintain our buses or assets. Same thing with transportation personnel. This one was important, we think, to remove because it sort of identifies job responsibilities, and we want to make sure that is defined in a job description rather than a school board policy. And I think that would be appropriate for a superintendent or a position like that. But, you know, there, and here is like shop foreman and things like that, that really just should not be defined in policy, should be designed in the, in the, in the job description. And then motor vehicles, again, this is one that we felt like we did not need to say that we're going to have and own motor vehicles, since we do that anyway. And the last one is, school bus drivers, just identifying some components for them, no suggested changes on that front. I was happy to take any questions.
All these policy workgroups, you have two board members serving on them, right? So, who's on operations policy workgroup? Mr. Tross?
Tross and Mr. Andrews, right?
Maybe I.
Each policy workgroup, you worked out these policies with those two school board members.
That's right.
Right, that's what they go.
This video is.
Okay, okay. I do have a question.
Sure thing.
About EEAB dash R Y. It has a cross-reference to a policy E E A. And to my knowledge, there does not exist a policy E E A.
Okay.
So, you, probably one of the others was intended and just the full designation is left out, but that needs to be repaired.
We'll check on that.
Yeah.
Thank you for that. Other questions?
He, do you have another one, Dr.?
No, that was it.
All right, Dr. Carter, go ahead.
I'm looking at policy number GDQ for the school bus driver. So, I can understand for the eligibility for employment, some other added requirements than other employees. But, but number C, or letter C, to furnish a statement signed by two reputable persons who reside in the school dish, school division or in the applicant's community, that the person's of good moral character. Do we still do that?
Well, let me check on that one. I, I know the majority of this is related to their CDL, I don't, I doubt that's related to that, but I will check and make sure, see what's up with that.
Contingent, you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I would like to move that, with the exception of the one that I questioned, EEAB dash R Y, that apparently we need to clarify that. I would move that we move all the others to an action item for tonight.
Dr. Carter.
I want to wait for that GDQ also.
Oh, okay, you want to pull those two out?
Yes.
Okay, so, let me restate my motion. My motion is to make all of these, excepting EEAB dash R Y and GDQ, action items. Those two would be held out and come back for a second reading.
Is there a second to that motion?
Okay.
Mr. Andrews. Madam Clark, would you please call the roll?
Yeah, that's not, it's not showing up on mine.
There is an E E A under active policies, not draft policies, it's an active one, I just.
Oh, maybe because when I click on it, I go to the draft version.
Those are the drafts, there's.
That's the explanation.
Well, modify your motion before we vote.
So, if I look at active, let me check that here. Active, E, E, am I looking at active now? Active, E.
E E A, if that's what you said.
Yeah, and that policy.
Yes, it does exist, okay.
Well, modify your motion.
Okay, so, let's try again. With the exception of GDQ, I move that we make the approval of the rest of these an action item for tonight.
A second, Mr. Andrews. Madam Clark, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Jalil.
Yes.
Mr. Andrews.
Yes.
Mr. Tross.
Yes.
Dr. Day.
Yes.
Dr. Gupta.
Yes.
Dr. Carter.
Yes.
Mrs. Preston.
Yes.
Mr. DePaul.
Yes.
Mrs. Laurie.
Yes.
Now, it's an action item, is there a motion to approve it?
I move we approve.
Dr. Day. Mrs. Laurie. Madam Clark, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Jalil.
Yes.
Mr. Andrews.
Yes.
Mr. Tross.
Yes.
Dr. Day.
Yes.
Dr. Gupta.
Yes.
Dr. Carter.
Yes.
Mrs. Preston.
Yes.
Mr. DePaul.
Yes.
Mrs. Laurie.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Fiscal management.
Okay, fiscal, we had a lot of policy workgroups that met, and I am going to turn this one over to Ms. Jamies.
Good evening, members of the board. Fiscal management policies are our friend. Most of these policies are industry standard, they're in accordance with management policies in the financial world and realm. There were a couple of conversations and discussions had around D J G vendor relations. There was a phrase in there calling for a, accepting of gifts and gratuities, having, pending a nominal or minimal value to it. And there was discussion around that being subjective, whether or not we needed to have a definite amount appended to that. I researched in the Code of Virginia, in, at the state level, and that language, language is in accordance with the Code of Virginia. So, we, we align with what the state standards are. The other item was, we had a small, minor wording update on the cash in school buildings. We just removed a word to, to make it a more efficient line. Other than that, most of the, most of the policies were accepted at face value.
Secondary.
I'll entertain any questions at this time.
Second.
I have a, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Regarding policy DN about disposal of surplus items. So, this talks about when the district does have items to dispose, they can either auction them off, sell them, and so forth, depending upon their value. But, my question is, when items are identified for disposal, and so, might be available for people to bid on, if, for instance, if we're auctioning them, is that announced somewhere?
So, what's been done in the past is, we used a website called GovDeals that you can, you can send out. So, it sends out a mass notification to people who sign up for that and that sort of thing.
Okay. So, I just want to be sure that, you know, that without a public announcement of it, there's an opportunity for abuse, where you tell your buddy, hey, this thing that you wanted is coming up for auction, don't tell anyone else and you'll get the bid. So, it's important that that be publicized, yeah, okay.
Use of driver training cars, is there anything that we need to update for, like, how often these cars are purchased because of overuse?
You certainly, that could, that could be in policy, that, I don't know that was the intent of that policy, but.
Okay, I was just curious, because I'm thinking cars get old and, you know, and newer cars have newer things in them that, you know, that others don't have anymore, so.
I would think that that would apply to capital improvement programs.
Okay, all right.
So, that's how, we would move that in consideration in that realm.
Regarding the policy DMZ, cash in school buildings? I know in prior years, there was a, a dollar amount, so there's no dollar amount in, or is that in the regulations?
There's another policy that the committee reviewed, I don't mean to interrupt.
No, you're fine.
There's another policy that the committee reviewed called Money in Schools. Is that, that's where the dollar amount is? We did have Barbara Rakuma ask us to pull that one for this meeting, because she had some updates that we didn't consider. And so, I talked to Mr. DePaul and Mr. Andrews, and they said, we'll go ahead and pull it, and then we'll, we'll bring it back another time, but we want to make sure there's a reasonable numbers at this point.
This is a first reading, is there a motion to make it an action item?
A move that we make this an action.
Dr. Carter, Mr. Tross. Madam Clark, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Jalil.
Yes.
Mr. Andrews.
Yes.
Mr. Tross.
Yes.
Dr. Day.
Yes.
Dr. Gupta.
Yes.
Dr. Carter.
Yes.
Mrs. Preston.
Yes.
Mr. DePaul.
Yes.
Mrs. Laurie.
Yes.
Now, this is an action item, is there a motion to approve it?
I have a.
Go ahead, we'll do the discussion.
Well, what was the item that you said got pulled? It was the money in schools, GM dash R Z.
And we'll, we'll bring that back.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that before we proceed.
Are you making a motion to approve it?
Yeah, I'll move that we approve.
That, the next motion is a second. Mr. Andrews, Madam Clark, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Jalil.
Yes.
Mr. Andrews.
Yes.
Mr. Tross.
Yes.
Dr. Day.
Yes.
Dr. Gupta.
Yes.
Dr. Carter.
Yes.
Mrs. Preston.
Yes.
Mr. DePaul.
Yes.
Mrs. Laurie.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, CNI.
Okay, curriculum instruction policy workgroup also met in January, and I will turn that over to Ms. Pew.
Thank you, Dr. Edwards. We did meet on January the twenty-sixth. Mrs. Laurie and Dr. Day serve on the curriculum instruction policy workgroup. All of them are three-year review. The last two, INDC and IGAK, were the only ones that had just small changes. One was a cross, cross-reference to another policy. And the other, we added, the last one, IGAK, Virginia code was added. The one that I want to call specific attention to is that first one, J E C B. And you will see there that our current policy, what is in right at the top, currently, Lynchburg City Schools does not accept students for part-time enrollment, with the exception of homeschool students who are members of in-division J ROTC training programs. And it's open to whole, homeschool students as provided in policy LBD. And that's about home instruction, and there is a mention in there about them being eligible for J ROTC membership. It is, we are suggesting as a policy workgroup, with, with the input of some others, that we reconsider limiting our part-time enrollment just to homeschool students and J ROTC membership, that we are, would allow private school and homeschool students to apply for part-time enrollment in Lynchburg City Schools for high school bearing credit courses, and that they would have to apply each year pursuant to the code. We've also, in your, in the agenda, there is a draft application. But you can see here, there is a specific admission process, an enrollment process. And there were some questions, and when we reviewed this about part-time students enrolling. There were some questions, and when we reviewed this about part-time students enrolling in at least one academic, which is a credit-bearing course, for each school sanction, for each activity that they participated in. It was brought to my attention, and thank you, Dr. Wodoka, for asking that question. Based on Virginia High School League rules, students must be enrolled in a minimum of five courses and must have a minimum of five classes in the semester prior to participating in a sport or a sanctioned club by V H S L, which would be Athletics, Forensics, Scholarship Bowl, and the V H S L Theater Competition. So part-time students could be enrolled in school sanctioned clubs or extracurricular activities, but we would require that for each of those activities they participated in, they would be enrolled in at least one academic credit-bearing course. Transportation would be the responsibility of a part-time family, and this, again, is, is from V SBA, the academic credit. We would not do class ranking and grade point average. They would not be computed for part-time students, and they would not be eligible to receive a diploma from L C S upon graduation. And they also have to participate in an A P, the exam when they take an A P course. I did reach back out to all of our J R O T C instructors, and membership in the Marine Corps J O T C is limited to homeschool students, and it is not open to private school students per their regulations. However, Air Force J R O T C is open to both homeschool and private school students, but it would pend, would be pending based on a written agreement between the private school, Lynchburg City Schools, and the Air Force J R O T C unit. So if we had any private school students who wish to enroll, we would need to write that agreement. So we are hoping that this change in policy and allowing students to take up to three high school credit-bearing courses as a part-time student will attract more homeschool students, will attract possibly more part-time students, and open up the, the possibilities. We do get partial credit for A D M for part-time students based on code.
Excellent.
So that's really the only big policy on this list that has a change.
This is a positive step forward. So is, is there a motion to make it an action?
Well, I have quite a few questions on this one.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Because I was here when we talked about the exchange students, and how much, we talked about the cost, and could they do this, could they do that, and when they were actually living here with families, and that was a major thing. And then how would this impact, the, some of these courses are limited in the number of students they take.
And that's in the policy.
Okay.
Their enrollment in the courses based on availability of, of a seat or a space in that course, that's in the policy.
And you helped about the A D M, so it will count toward that.
Yes, we'll get partial A D M, absolutely. That's, that is in code. And again, it's only open to private and homeschool students who are residents of Lynchburg. We're not opening, you know, this is not open to outside of Lynchburg, and they are only allowed to attend the school in which they would be zoned for, and they, there will be no special placements. So, you know, if I live in the zone area for E C Glass, I have to enroll in classes at E C Glass, and I can't request to be changed to Heritage. So there are, there are limitations.
Dr. Carter, you good? Is there a motion to make, Mr. Tross?
Another question.
With respect to the, the special programs, the governor's school, the dual enrollment, am I, to understand, make sure I read this correctly, the private schools, homeschools can apply to those programs, and if they are accepted in those programs, and they, they're competing with the same public school students, same criteria, selection criteria. If they're accepted, they must, in that point, take all their classes as a full-time student.
Yes, yes. And we did talk to five surrounding counties, and four of the counties follow this procedure currently, as we do. We don't have a policy for it, but it is now in policy that if, four, four of the surrounding counties had the same thing, if a student applies for and is accepted, they must enroll in full-time at that school. One of the other counties doesn't even allow their, their private or their homeschool students to apply for governor's school.
And currently, what is our current position on private schools trying to get into the gov schools, the STEM account?
We, we have allowed them to apply, and if accepted, we've, we've stated that they needed to become full, fully enrolled in Lynchburg City Schools.
So for those special programs, this policy really does not make any kind of change to the current existing program?
Correct.
Okay, so it doesn't?
Is there a motion to make it an action item? Mr. Jalil, do you have a question?
Dr. Gupta?
Do the, do these students who go through this part-time get any kind of certificate or recognition at all?
No.
At the end?
Now, if it's a private school student, they're probably going to still be enrolled in their private school, and they would receive a diploma through the private school. Homeschool students, even those that are currently homeschooled now, don't receive anything from us.
Nothing in particular, but is there's, is there a line item or a record that shows that they had done those things in the school, even though they graduated with a diploma from their, their private school?
Official transcript.
Yeah, there would be a transcript from the private school. Homeschool students don't have an official transcript. They have to turn in proof of adequate progress at the end of each year, and then we review that proof of adequate progress. And once they are senior or eighteen, they're, they're done. But there is no, currently, there is no transcript for them. There is no grade point average for homeschool.
So when you review that process, you just call or make an email that says that this is sufficient or adequate?
Correct, and there's code for homes, for home instruction, and so we have to follow the code of what is allowed to, for proof of academic, successful academic progress. So it can't just be a picture of several worksheets that they turn in to us. We have to follow what is accepted by the Code of Virginia, and if we have any questions, we certainly work with that family. But there's several different ways that they can show us that progress.
Dr. Carter?
I almost forget. So do you, Mrs., Mrs. Pew, do you know how many students have done that? Like, private or homeschool that have applied and been accepted to go, or the, I mean, I'm scared. The governor's school or STEM? Are you aware?
Since I have been in this position, I believe we've only had two private school students apply, and I am not aware that either one of them were accepted into the governor's school. But those are the only two applications that I'm aware of.
Thank you.
Is there intent to make it an action item? Any desire?
I'll move that we make it this set of curriculum and instruction policy updates an action item.
A second.
Dr. Day, Mr. Tross, Madam Clark, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Jalil?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Tross?
Yes.
Dr. Day?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Dr. Carter?
Yes.
Mrs. Preston?
Yes.
Mr. DePaul?
Yes.
Mrs. Laurie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
So this is an action item now? Is there a motion to approve it?
I approve.
Mrs. Laurie?
My second.
Mr. Tross, any discussion on that motion? Madam Clark, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Jalil?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Tross?
Yes.
Dr. Day?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Dr. Carter?
Yes.
Mrs. Preston?
Yes.
Mr. DePaul?
Yes.
Mrs. Laurie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Now, item G is notice of closed meeting. The chair recommends the school board approve a motion to convene a closed meeting to discuss the following, as permitted by the Virginia Code S two point two dash three seven one one eight seven eight and twenty-nine. P P E A discussion, and there is an addition.
And one. The part of that code that, that justifies a closed session meeting for the, that thing that was added is paragraph...
What will be the public content for that? Item, the personnel discussion?
Yes.
Personnel item, okay. So P P A discussion and personnel item. Is there a motion to approve, to go into the closed meeting?
Motion.
Mr. DePaul?
Second.
Madam Clark, would you please call the...
Mr. Jalil?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Tross?
Yes.
Dr. Day?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Dr. Carter?
No.
Mrs. Preston?
Yes.
Mr. DePaul?
Yes.
Mrs. Laurie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We are in closed session now, and...
We move into another room?
No.
We just need to lock the door.